In the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Glory be to Jesus Christ, glory be forever. And welcome today to our Bible study. Last week, we looked at the Book of Leviticus. We went past the halfway point, almost halfway through the book, and today we will complete the rest of the Book of Leviticus, chapters 17 to 27. Let us begin with prayer. Heavenly King, Advocate, Spirit of Truth, who are everywhere present and fill all things, Treasury of blessings, Bestor of life, Come and dwell within us, cleanse us of all that defiles us, and, O Good One, save our souls. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now and forever and ever. Amen. One of the Pharisees, a lawyer, came up to Jesus and asked him a question to test him. He said, "Teacher, which is the greatest commandment in the law?" In other words, from all the 613 laws found in the Pentateuch, the first five books of the Old Testament, which is also called the Law, capital L, which law, small l, is the most important? Jesus answered the lawyer by quoting from two different books of the Pentateuch. First quoting the Book of Deuteronomy, Jesus said to him,[147.84][147.91]"You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your mind," Deuteronomy 6, verse 5. This is the first and greatest commandment. And then quoting from the Book of Leviticus, Jesus said, "And the second is like it: You shall love your neighbor as yourself," Leviticus, chapter 19, verse 18. On these two commandments depend all the law and the prophets. It is important to note here that one of the most famous teachings of Jesus, the second great commandment, to love one's neighbor as oneself, was taken from the Book of Leviticus. In the New Testament, we find a total of 10 references to this law from Leviticus, "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." The Book of Leviticus is truly, on several different levels, a key book in order to fully understand both the Old and New Testaments. Let's review just from last week, how the Book of Leviticus is divided. It can be divided into seven sections. So the first section, the first seven chapters, deal with the five different sacrifices of worship: whole burnt offerings, grain offerings, peace offerings, sin offerings, and guilt offerings. The second section dealt with the priesthood, the consecration and anointing of Aaron his high priest, and the consecration of his sons. The third section dealt with ritual purity, and so laws concerning ritual purity, so has nothing to do with moral purity or impurity, but simply ritual cleanliness and uncleanliness. Right in the middle of the Book of Leviticus stands chapter 16, "The Day of Atonement." So the day of atonement was a holy day observed once a year on the 10th day of the seventh lunar month, which falls somewhere in September, October. And the rituals of this day both cleansed and re-consecrated to God, the priests, the people, and the sanctuary. The fifth section deals with laws of holiness, laws concerning worship, moral purity, mercy, and justice. The sixth section is just one chapter, covenant blessings and curses, blessings promised for covenant faithfulness, and the consequences of unfaithfulness. And that kind of concludes the section on the law of holiness. And then the last chapter, Leviticus 27, is kind of an epilogue on the topic of voluntary dedications or consecrations or vows. So the voluntary offerings of persons, places, or things, voluntarily consecrated to God. In our previous session last week, we studied the first four sections. We got as far as the end of chapter 16, "The Day of Atonement." And today, we will complete our study of the last three sections of the Book of Leviticus, beginning with the laws of holiness. So the laws of holiness are found from chapters 17 to 25. What is holiness? Holiness is first and foremost a description of God, an essential attribute of God. The word holy in Hebrew, kados, and in Greek, agios, means sacred or set apart. God is holy because he is set apart, transcendent, totally other. God is perfect in every way. He lacks nothing. He is eternal, set apart from all his creation. This is God's holiness. Holiness is an important theme in the Book of Leviticus. Not only is God holy, he also calls his people to be holy, set apart for him, dedicated to him, sanctified by him, obedient to him, living a life that is pure, blameless, and pleasing to him. Speaking to Israel through Moses, the Lord says, "I am the Lord your God; consecrate yourselves therefore and be holy; for I am holy; I am the Lord who brought you up out of the land of Egypt to be your God; and you shall therefore be holy; for I am holy," Leviticus 11, verses 44 to 45. "Consecrate yourselves therefore and be holy; for I am the Lord your God; keep my statues and do them; I am the Lord who sanctifies you," Leviticus 20, verses 7 and 8. "You shall be holy unto me; for I am the Lord; I, the Lord, am holy, and have separated you from the peoples, that you should be mine," Leviticus 20, verse 26. In the New Testament, Jesus confirms this Old Testament call to holiness. In the Sermon on the Mount, he says, "Be perfect as your heavenly Father is perfect," Matthew, chapter 5, verse 48. And in his first letter, the apostle Peter writes the following. He says, "As obedient children do not conform to the passions of your former ignorance, but as he who called you is holy, be holy yourselves and all your conduct; since it is written, 'You shall be holy; for I am holy,'" 1 Peter, chapter 1, verses 14 to 16. And we see that Peter quotes again the Book of Leviticus. In Leviticus chapters 19 or 17 to 25, the word holy or holiness occurs some 85 times. And so the appropriate title for this section, "The Laws of Holiness." Here we find a description of the kind of life the people of Israel are called to live, which sets them apart from all the other nations of the world as a holy people, pure, blameless, and consecrated to God. In essence, the various laws of holiness are simply an extension of the two great commandments, to love God and neighbor, and also an extension of the 10 commandments, the 10 words, or the decalogue that describes God's people. The laws of holiness in this section are presented in the following order: holy and unholy worship sacrifices, the holiness or sanctity of blood, holy and unholy sexual relations, holy and unholy actions, penalties for lawbreakers, holy conduct for priests, acceptable holy offerings, holy feast days, and holy years, such as the seventh year and the jubilee year. So let us go through each of the various different sections. Let's begin with the holy and unholy worship sacrifices, Leviticus, chapter 17, 1 to verses 1 to 8. Before the covenant at Sinai, sacrifices and worship of God could be offered anywhere by the firstborn sons of Israel, who served as priests and kings of their households or family clans. However, because of Israel's constant temptation to sin by worshiping other gods, worshiped by other nations, and especially because of the apostasy after the establishment of the covenant at Mount Sinai, the new renewed covenant made two important restrictions to set Israel apart and to protect them from slipping back into adultery. The first restriction limited the priesthood to the tribe of Levi, the tribe that had proved itself loyal to Moses. The second restriction limited the offering of sacrifices and worship of God to one specific place, the tent of meeting, or the tabernacle. And in the future, the tabernacle sanctuary would be replaced with a more permanent structure, the temple in Jerusalem. In support of the first commandment, "You have no other gods before me," the first set of holiness laws as described in Leviticus, chapter 17, verses 1 to 8, forbade the offering of worship sacrifices at any other place other than the tabernacle. The sacrificial animal could be killed in or outside the camp, but the ritual offering in worship could only take place at the tent of meeting. Anyone who refused to bring his sacrifice to the tent of meeting would be guilty and would bring about his own destruction. So these laws were specific to animals being sacrificed with the intention of worship. Any animals, whether domestic or wild, intended specifically for food, for all to eat, could be killed and eaten anywhere. Let's look at the holiness of blood as described in Leviticus, chapter 17, verses 10 to 16. "The prohibition against consuming blood is an old one; it goes back to the covenant that God had established with Noah after the flood." "The Lord said, 'Every moving thing that lives shall be food for you; and as I gave you the green plants, I give you everything; only you shall not eat flesh with its life, that is its blood,' Genesis, chapter 9, verses 3 to 4." "Blood was believed to be the source of life in a living creature, and therefore something that belonged exclusively to God. It had to be drained, poured out upon the earth as a sign that the flesh of the animal was a gift from God, but that the life of the animal must return to God." Respect for the sanctity of blood was a sign of respect for God, the giver of life. Blood was also considered to be sacred because it had an atoning value. The animal sacrificed took the place of the offerer, and the blood sprinkled before the veil of the tabernacle and poured out at the base of the altar would atone for any sins committed. In the New Testament, at first, Jewish Christians continued to keep this practice of not consuming blood. And they were scandalized by the fact that the new Gentile Christians did consume meat together with blood. And to prevent further scandal and tension, the first council held in Jerusalem wisely laid down the ruling that Christians were to abstain from blood. If you want to read the whole section on that, please refer to Acts, chapter 15. However, this ruling was only a temporary one. Jesus had pronounced all foods to be clean, including the blood of animals. This was confirmed by the vision of the apostle Peter. The apostle Peter experienced this vision where he saw heaven open and a great sheet bound at the four corners being lowered from heaven to the earth, and it was filled with all kinds of four-legged animals. And a voice spoke to him, saying, "Rise, Peter, kill and eat; what God has cleansed, you must not call common." And so this happened three times, confirming that that all the animals that Peter had considered to be unclean based on the Book of Leviticus were now pronounced to be clean by God. The vision confirmed not only that God had pronounced all foods clean, but that there would no longer be any separation between the Jews and the Gentiles. The new Israel would include all the nations of the earth. Finally, since the perfect sacrifice of Christ replaced all the Old Testament sacrifices, and the blood of Christ brought atonement for all sin once and for all, the sacrifice of animals were no longer necessary, and their blood no longer carried any atoning value. Let's look now at Leviticus, chapter 18, "Holy and Unholy Sexual Relations." The 10 commandments upheld the sacredness of marriage, defining marriage as the union of a man and a woman, and the sacredness of sexual relations within the bounds of holy marriage. "In support of the commandments, you shall not commit adultery, and you shall not covet your neighbor's wife." The laws on sexual morality made it clear that all sexual actions outside of marriage were sinful, morally unclean, and an abomination before the Lord. These sins of sexual immorality include sins of incest, sex with family members, fornication, sex before marriage, adultery, sex outside of marriage, sodomy, homosexual acts, and bestiality, sex with animals. "The Lord said, 'You shall not do as they do in the land of Egypt, where you dwelt; and you shall not do as they do in the land of Canaan, to which I am bringing you; you shall not walk in their statutes.'" In other words, you will not follow the immoral sexuality practiced by the other nations. As a holy people set apart for a special relationship with God, the people of God must not imitate the practices of other peoples. "The Lord said, 'You shall therefore keep my statues and walk in them; I am the Lord your God; you shall therefore keep my statues and my ordinances by doing which a man shall live, I am the Lord.' None of you shall approach anyone near of kin to uncover nakedness; I am the Lord; none of you shall uncover the nakedness of any family member, whether father, mother, or stepmother, sister, or stepsister, aunt, or brother's wife. You shall not lie carnally with your neighbor's wife; you shall not lie with a male as with a woman; it is an abomination. You shall not lie with any beast and defile yourself with it; neither shall any woman give herself to a beast to lie with it; it is perversion. You shall not give any of your children to devote them by fire to Moloch, and so profane the name of the Lord your God." The pagan ceremonies of the Canaanites involved sexual acts, ritual prostitution, and even the sacrifice of children. "Do not defile yourselves by any of these things, lest the land vomit you out when you defile it; for whoever shall do any of these abominations, the persons that do them shall be cut off from among the people; never defile yourself by them; I am the Lord your God." In the New Testament, Jesus confirms that sexual immorality defiles a person. He says to his disciples, "What comes out of a man defiles him; for from within, out of the heart of man, come evil thoughts, fornication, adultery, coveting or covetous, wickedness, deceit, licentiousness, lewdness, foolishness; all these evil things come from within, and they defile a man," Mark, chapter 7, verses 20 to 23. Saint Paul also confirms Jesus's teaching on sexual immorality. In his letter to the Galatians, he writes, "Now the works of the flesh are evident, which are: adultery, fornication, unclingness, lewdness; those who practice such things will not inherit the kingdom of God." And in his first letter to the Corinthians, he says, "Do not be deceived: neither the immoral, nor adulterers, nor idolaters, nor sexual perverts, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor drunkards, nor revilers, nor robbers will inherit the kingdom of God," 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 9 to 10. The next section, which is mainly chapter 19 of Leviticus, deals with a varied list of holy and unholy actions. In this new section, we find a variety of different moral laws and religious obligations that reaffirm the 10 commandments, and several laws of mercy and justice concerning the poor and those in need. So the following are some examples, excerpts from chapter 19. "Every one of you shall revere his mother and father; and you shall keep my Sabbaths; do not turn to idols or make for yourselves molten gods. When you offer a sacrifice of peace offering to the Lord, it shall be eaten the same day or on the morrow, and anything left over until the third day shall be burned with fire. When you reap the harvest of your land, you shall not reap your field to the very border; neither shall you gather the gleanings after your harvest; and you shall not strip your vineyard bare; neither shall you gather the fallen grapes of your vineyard; you shall leave them for the poor and for the sojourner. You shall not steal, nor deal falsely, nor lie to one another; and you shall not swear by my name falsely, and so profane the name of the Lord. You shall not oppress your neighbor or rob him; the wages of a hired servant shall not remain with you all night until morning." So according to the custom of the day, wages were paid daily at the end of the day because the worker depended on that money to survive from day to day. "You shall do no injustice in judgment; you shall not be partial to the poor or defer to the great; but in righteousness shall you judge your neighbor. You shall not stand forth against the life of your neighbor; you shall not hate your brother in your heart; but you shall reason with your neighbor, lest you bear sin because of him. You shall not take vengeance or bear any grudge against the sons of your own people; but you shall love your neighbor as yourself," Leviticus 19, verse 18. "You shall not practice any augury or witchcraft; this included summoning up the dead, or any pagan mourning customs, such as shaving the head or self-mutilation, ritual cuttings into the flesh, and tattoo markings on account of the dead. Do not turn to mediums or wizards; do not seek them out to be defiled. You shall rise up before the gray head and honor the face of an old man. Old people deserve to be respected and honored for their wisdom and experience in life. When a stranger sojourns with you in your land, you shall not do him wrong; you shall love him as yourself; for you are strangers in the land of Egypt. Foreigners, along with orphans and widows, were under God's special protection. You shall not... You shall do no wrong in judgment; in measures of length, or weight, or quantity, you shall have just balances, just weights, a just effah, and a just hin." Chapter 20 of Leviticus deals with penalties for lawbreaking. The penalties for lawbreakers, as outlined in Leviticus, chapter 20, if you read through them, they're quite severe. In many cases, the offense was punishable by death. And the death penalty could only be imposed by Israel's civil authority and not by individuals. However, when you compare these penalties with other laws and customs of that period, other legal codes, then you'll find that other legal codes of that time impose similar or even heavier penalties. And so it's important to keep in mind, to note and keep in mind, that the penalties were first and foremost designated to act as severe deterrents. The ancient peoples of that time period favored that form of style of law which was clear and severe. Leviticus, chapter 21, deals with the holy conduct of priests. So greater holiness and ritual purity was required of priests. And even more was demanded of the high priest, over and above the other priests. Let's look at the holy days and holy feast days. The Sabbath. The Sabbath was the first and most holy day to be observed by the people of Israel. So the seventh day was to be a day of rest and a day dedicated to the Lord. Passover and unleavened bread. Passover would begin with the memorial Passover meal in the evening of the 14th day of Nisan. And the first day of Passover would be the 15th day of Nisan, a high and solemn day of rest. And the feast would be celebrated. for seven days. The next feast is the first fruits, or the first sheaf of the ripe barley. So the barley would come up first, and the first sheaf that could be made from the barley coming up would then be brought to the tabernacle and offered in thanksgiving for that first kind of growth. So this feast was celebrated on the sixteenth day of Nisan, or the first Sunday after the Passover Sabbath, somewhere in March or April. A sheaf of the ripe barley was brought to the tabernacle and offered with a whole burnt offering and a grain offering. Pentecost is the spring harvest feast, the first fruits of the grain harvest. This feast was celebrated seven weeks after Passover, sometime in May or June. Two loaves of leavened bread, made from the first grain harvested, was brought to the temple and offered as a grain sacrifice together with a whole burnt offering, a sin offering, and a peace offering. Trumpets, the new year. The first day of the seventh lunar month, sometime in September, October, was celebrated as the beginning of the new year. It was announced by the sound of trumpets and designated as a solemn day of rest. A whole burnt offering was offered to the Lord. Next, you have the day of atonement. This day was commemorated on the tenth day of the seventh month, sometime in September, October. It was a solemn day of fasting, abstinence, and penance. With the ceremony and the rituals of this day, the priests, the people, and the sanctuary were cleansed, purified, and re-consecrated to God. Again, this feast is described in detail in chapter 16 of Leviticus. Finally, you have the feast of tabernacles or booths. This is the fall harvest of grapes and olives. This feast was celebrated for seven days, plus one additional solemn day of rest, and the eighth day, beginning on the fifteenth day of the seventh month and ending on the twenty-second day. During the seven days of the feast, the people would dwell in tents or booths in remembrance of the time that Israel dwelt in tents for forty years after the exodus from Egypt. Leviticus, chapter 25, deals with holy years. And there is two different types of holy years. The sabbatical year, so every seventh year was to be observed as a year of rest for the land. So no work was to be done on the land which was designated to rest for a whole year. And then you have the jubilee year. So every seventh sabbatical year, which would have been the forty-ninth year, was to be observed as a special jubilee year, during which anyone enslaved because of debt was to be set free and returned to his family. And any land that was sold because of debt could also be bought back or redeemed by the original owner. The goal was to kind of like reset or reboot the economy, to assist any poor family in recovering their lost property and to regain economic stability. It was meant to help maintain a good and healthy distribution of wealth among the people of Israel. The land belonged to God. He was the rightful owner. And it was God who entrusted it to whomever he had given it. And so the land was not to be amassed into the hands of a small group of wealthy and powerful people. Chapter 26 deals with covenant blessings and curses. "The laws of holiness end with blessings promised to those who remain faithful to the covenant, and a series of divine warnings and curses upon those who do not remain faithful to the covenant law." So there are consequences. It tells us, this chapter tells us, just like in the physical world, there are consequences to actions. So in the moral world, there are consequences to how a person chooses to live his life. In the final chapter, Leviticus, chapter 27, deals with voluntary dedications or vows. So this last chapter in the book of Leviticus serves as a kind of an epilogue. The subject matter is quite different from the rest of the book. It deals with the issue of voluntary religious vows or the consecration of persons, places, or things to God. It's important to note that such vows or consecrations were completely voluntary, free gifts, and not required by the law. Some things and places vowed or consecrated to God could be returned to the original owner during a jubilee year. Animals, however, appropriate for sacrifice, could not be redeemed; but houses and lands vowed to the Lord were redeemable. The booty collected in the holy war was also devoted to God and could not be taken for private or common use. This concludes our study of the book of Leviticus. Not much action, but it's a lot of information, but really background information that is key, again, in understanding the Old Testament and the New Testament. Many of the things that happen that are described in the Gospels and the life of Jesus. So next week, we will now begin a new book, the Book of Numbers. And if you can read Numbers, chapter 1 to 19, that would be great. We're going to focus on that one year. So Israel spent a whole year at the foot of Mount Sinai in preparation, and then begins its journey through the wilderness in a hope of entering into the Promised Land. And that journey will last some time. So it'll be a good forty years before they will enter into the Promised Land. Let us conclude with prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power, and the glory are yours, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, now and forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Glory be to Jesus Christ.